Thank you. Council and audience, welcome to the regular council meeting for Midland Town Council Wednesday, November 4th, 2020. This meeting is being held virtually and just being broadcast on Rogers Cable 53 and streamed as well on over the internet. I'd just like to read the traditional land acknowledgements that the town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land which is the traditional and treaty territory of the Anishinaabe people, now known as the Chipewa Tribe Council comprised of Bosley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre-confederation Treaty V and Treaty 16, and included within the Williams Treaties of 1923. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land which is the traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat, and that the historic and the historic homelands of the Maytee, that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. With that, just before we get started, I'd like to make a general announcement. It has to do with the next meeting. I'd like to remind everyone of two public meetings that will be held on November 18th, 2020, 7:00 PM during the regular council meeting of council. First public meeting is in regards to allowing the public the opportunity to review and provide comments on a proposed development charges bylaw amendment. Those changes, I believe, are posted on our website at engagingmidland.ca. Second meeting, a public meeting, is to allow the public an opportunity to review and provide comment on a zoning bylaw amendment application respecting 808 Virchwood Drive. If you would like to provide comment to the, to at the virtual meeting, please contact clerk Karen DeRush at 705-526-4275, extension 2208. That's 705-526-4275. Extension 2208. Please do that at least two days in advance of the meeting. Alternatively, written comments are also wel- welcome and can be forwarded to the clerk. That's Karen DeRush. Further information is also available on our town website, so. If you'd like to participate, please do so before, if you can, before the meeting. If you'd like to participate in the virtual meeting, contact the clerk. With that. I'd like to ask everybody to just pause for a moment of silent reflection. We, of course, are coming on to. Remembered today, unfortunately, with COVID-19, we won't be able to join our veterans in remembering the sacrifices of their fellows, so just give them maybe a moment's contemplation for the folks who have served and continue to serve in our forces. Thank you. Counsel, are there any declarations of conflict of interest with respect to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I have motions arising from a closed session which council participated in earlier this evening. And the motion is moved by Councilman Maine, seconded by Councilor Cunningham, that further to the verbal report of the deputy clerk and confidential criteria-based matrix provided at the closed meeting session of council held November 4th, 2020 regarding a committee appointment, council confirms the following. That Kevin Halligan be appointed to homelessness action committee, that the appointment shall be for a term consistent with the term of council. Council, you've heard the motion. All in favor? Councilor Cunningham.
Could we get a present member to make that motion? Councilman Maine is not here.
Oh, sorry. You're right. Thank you. Counselor Oshinsky, are you good with that? Thank you. Welcome, Councilor McGinn. So, I'll move by Councilor Oshinsky, then a second by Councilor Cunningham. So, and I'll just reread the motion since Councilor McGinn has joined us. That's further to the verbal report of the deputy clerk and confidential criteria-based matrix provided at the closed meeting session of council held November 4th, 2020 regarding a committee appointment. Council confirms the following, that Kevin Halligan be appointed to the homelessness action committee, that the appointment shall be for a term consistent with the term of council. All those in favor? Thank you. That vote carries. Moving on. The motion moved by Councilman McGinn, seconded by Councilor Gordon. That the contents of the regular council closed session agenda for November 4th, 2020 be approved as amended for the addition of a COVID-19 update by the CIO. Comments or questions on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That also carries. I have moved by Counselor, Deputy Mayor Ross, beg pardon. Keep changing this. Counselor McGinn. That the items and related recommendations contained within November 4th, November 4th, 2020 consent agenda as consent items having been considered by council be adopted. Comments or questions from council? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That carries. So another motion moved by Deputy Mayor Ross and seconded by Counselor Gordon, that council resolve into the committee of the whole. All in favor? Thank you. That also carries. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, worship, and welcome everyone this evening. Beautiful day in Midland today. As they say, it may be a calm before a storm during the nice weather because I'm sure no one's coming. First up on our agenda this evening is, we have no presentations, but we do have a deputation from the Southern Georgian Bay Chamber of Commerce. And we have Ms. Kathy Tate, General Manager, to provide a PowerPoint presentation. Ms. Tate?
Sorry?
Oh, no problem. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'll remind you that you have 10 minutes for your presentation. I'll give you a two-minute remaining at some point if you were starting to go over. But thank you for coming, and it's all yours.
Thank you very much. Do I understand that my PowerPoint will play Karen's working on that? Oh, I think she's doing that, maybe?
It's Sherry.
It's magic.
Sorry, I'm just having, of course, a little. And can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize.
Yes, we can. We can hear you fine.
Okay, so, good evening, Mayor Strathern, Town Council and staff. Thank you so much for allowing me to present tonight and provide an overview of what I consider to be the newly revitalized and re-energized Southern Georgian Bay Chamber of Commerce, and provide a little bit of information about the activities, our activities over the past year and a half. To go to the next slide, I would. Do I, do I operate the slideshow, or how does that work?
I think you just didn't have to ask, but it's a bit slow.
Just asked, there's a slight delay, but we're definitely moving forward as you're on your request.
Thank you very much.
Kathy, just say next slide when you're ready.
Thank you so much. So, in case I haven't met you yet, I hope to do so in the near future. I came on board in my role as General Manager on April 1st of last year, which was definitely an interesting date to start a new position. So I've been in the role for about a year and a half now. I did not come from the Chamber world, and I did not come from the Southern Georgian Bay area, so there was lots for me to do to educate myself, not only on the Chamber of Commerce, but also on the region itself and the history. So one of my first initiatives was to send out a survey to the 400 members throughout Midland, Penetang, Teyan, Tiny Township, and gauge the perception of what the Chamber has been do- had been doing, what it was doing well and what it wasn't doing well. I did receive a great deal of feedback on this survey. Most of it, to be honest with you, was not positive. The general consensus was the Chamber of Commerce was a bit of an administrative organization up on the second level in our building, and a lot of comments that all we did was collect our annual fee and not do much else. So a lot of controversy became very obvious to me in a short period of time. So my mission over the last year and a half has been to prove to our members that there is real value in membership, and this might mean different things to different, different members. And so because we are entirely dependent on this membership revenue, and especially because of COVID with no special events taking place, no fundraising initiatives, we're entirely dependent on that membership revenue. We needed to make sure that these members were receiving this value. Next slide, please. So the first thing that I was bound and determined to do was to move this inaccessible, low-visibility office of ours from the second level down to the first level. So we did that in the end of February this year. And of course, right after that is when COVID arrived, but we did move downstairs. So we have opened as a new business information center on the first level. Very welcoming. We have banners outside and some information signage. We are welcoming anybody in the community as well as members in. We're distributing brochures. We're distributing business cards, providing referrals. We have some member displays in the office, and we're selling products for them. So our goal, once COVID retreats, which hopefully will be in the not-too-distant future, will be to provide even more information, and with our ideal location at the bottom of King Street, we're expecting a lot of visitor traffic. So this was imperative, I thought, to increase our visibility and our just accessibility and image in the community. So I'm very happy to say that we've moved downstairs. Next slide, please. One of the first things we did to show value to members is to introduce a number of workshops and webinars. So this just gives you an idea of some of them. Not too, too long ago, so we're working with members like Assisting You Social to prevent marketing workshops. The survey did, that we, we undertook workshops and webinars was something that the members really wanted to see. Marketing, finance, human resource, that type of thing. So we are working with various members to present these workshop, to present the workshops, sorry. So online presence, marketing, social media, that type of thing, very much seen of value to our members. Next slide, please. To give you a more idea, we've, we've hosted so many over the past year and a half. We have also partnered with a number of different organizations. We have a great working relationship now with the Berry and the Aurelia Chambers of Commerce, the Sandbox Center. We've partnered with the Heart of Georgian Bay to present workshops, Tourism Simcoe County. And we have spotlighted the expertise of our members as well, like Collaborative House and Assisting You Social. And these workshops and webinars have been very well attended, especially recently with, with the COVID situation. Next slide, please. Over the past six months or so, these workshops have really been even more valuable than before with so many businesses struggling and transforming services, especially online. Many of our retail members have gone to online shopping and e-commerce to try and compete with the big box stores, and we've presented many webinars in partnership with Chambers of Commerce and the different organizations I mentioned to make sure that our small businesses have as much information as possible to, to survive. Next slide, please. Another initiative ours, every, we started this in, in the end of the summer, actually. Every Wednesday morning at 10:00 AM, we feature one of our business members in a Business Straight Talk series. It's a one-hour webinar which is recorded and then sent out afterwards. So some of our members who have been spotlighted include Shirley's Boutique. We've got Georgian Bakery. Next slide, please. And we've had Carlton Wagonley Travel talk about the travel industry. We've had the Midland Public Library, who we've actually partnered on with these, these webinars. The OSPCA has been a great resource for us as well. So each week we fit, feature a different business. This is very, obviously, very relevant, very grassroots, and these are our own businesses that are talking about the COVID situation, what it's, how it's impacted them, how they've kind of transformed, pivoted, and been really, really resilient to make sure they could still function. Next slide, please. And share on the line what can talk to, or can appreciate this slide a little bit. So we've partnered with EDCNS on a couple of different initiatives. I did sit on the Weekly Task Force, the Business Recovery Task Force, which began in April, I believe, and ran once a week. So just talking about, again, our businesses, any, you know, needs that they had, what they were saying in terms of transforming their services and how they were functioning. So that was, again, very kind of grassroots. And most recently with EDCNS as well, we did partner on the I Love My Local program. So again, that message of shopping local and the importance of supporting our local business. Next slide, please. This is kind of an exciting program as well. We are, this is soon to launch. This is partnering with the Midland Y Men's Club. So this is an online shop, online local initiative as well. So 1,200 tickets will be sold, and the winner will receive $2,000 in gift certificates. And these gift certificates can only be redeemed at one of our members. So this is a partnership. We are trying to show benefit again to being a member of the Chamber of Commerce. So once these tickets are sold, the, the grand prize winner will receive $2,000, and that money can be redeemed at any of our, our member businesses. So pushing that shop local message and partnering with the Midland Y. Next slide, please. We are, have featured our second annual Rockstar Employee Contest, which is really a community pride initiative, and I do think that this is part of our role as the Chamber of Commerce is to really try and strengthen and build community pride and community spirit, spirit. So with this initiative, businesses are asked to nominate a great staff person for amazing prizes. The contest is a lot of fun. It generates some good, healthy competition in the community between businesses. And we do believe that we really do have amazing staff and ambassadors in the community, and they should be recognized, especially now during this pandemic situation. Next slide, please. So these are just some of the nominees. We actually announced the winner yesterday. And Mink Insurance, Julie Pfeifer, who you can see at the top left-hand side, she was the winner. And we posted a great video on our social media about her. So again, lots of healthy competition and just generating that community pride. Next slide, please. We were fortunate enough to receive a grant. And through the Cultural Alliance, and the initiative was to ask elementary students or kids to paint a picture depicting why it's so great to live in the Southern Georgian Bay region. It could have been any topic at all that showed why they were proud to, to live in this region. We had great participation. There's 41 kids actually submitted and their families. We had drew a lot of traffic into the Chamber office with this, and just a lot of fun. A lot of people thanked us for that. So the money that we received from the Cultural Alliance supported one of our members' minds alive. We purchased all the painting supplies, and we are now showcasing all those paintings in our office. So a lot of fun, and just getting our name out in the community again.
Ms. Tate, I'll remind you that you have 10 minutes. You have about two minutes left.
Okay, thank you. We are hosting seasons on Little Lake Tours. They're coming up as another initiative. Next slide, please. Biweekly e-newsletter is something that we've really pushed, especially during COVID, providing resources and different, different initiatives for our members. Next slide, please. And just to talk about social media a little bit, you can see, for those of you who are passionate about social media, as I am, this has been a primary source of getting our message out there. This is all organic. We have no marketing budget, so everything that we do is done organically. And I'm just trying to, can we move the? Sorry. The, the photos of everyone is over the kind of engagement section that I wanted to speak to? Can we go back or no? Can, we're going the wrong way?
That was just on your screen, Kathy. We all can lay out our screen how we want to, so we can.
Okay, sorry. So just what I wanted to bring to your attention back on that social media screen. The right-hand column and where we sit in terms of other Chamber of Commerce in the region. So I've given you a picture of what the Ontario Chamber of Commerce engagement is, Berry, Aurelia, and Collingwood, as well as Tourism Simcoe County. So those numbers that you see, that is weekly engagement, people that are liking, sharing, commenting on our posts. This is all done urbanically, so it's, it's strictly been done by perseverance and a lot of dedication. So that gives you an idea of the reach that we're seeing right now. Next slide, please. And I'll push along pretty quickly here. A lot of social media messaging on shop locals, so why it's so important, especially now during the pandemic. And this is just showing you some of the engagement and reach again. Next slide, please. And other things about the construction, of course, a lot of engagement. That center slide, if you see, got 1,942 people chatting about the wonderful construction that's happening in downtown Midland. Next slide, please. We feature with videos, profiles of our members. When I first came to the town, I didn't know what this big mill was about. I asked a lot of people. They didn't seem to know too much about it either. So we are spotlighting some of our members and what they are doing behind the scenes. And this was a three-part video series with ADM Mills, which received 1,284 engagements. Next slide, please. More contesting, just to drive engagement and profiling our members, really drive awareness and drive to their websites. Next, next slide, please. Pushing a lot of reviews. We have some, our businesses receive amazing reviews online, whether it be by Google, Yelp, TripAdvisor, and we really, really get the message out about those, those reviews and the testimonials because they carry so much weight. Next slide, please. Again, more, more messaging about our business owners and the wonderful reviews that they receive online. There's a lot of support for these businesses. Next slide, please. Same, same, more, just to give you a more idea about the testimonials. Next slide, please. I'm going to move along really quickly here because we don't have a lot of time. This is just to show you, this was a shop local, small business, support our small business message that I sent out a couple of weeks ago, and you can see almost 3,500 people like that post, and you can see the shares. Did I just lose everyone?
Anything else, Dad?
Oh, it's gone, has it?
I think you're, yeah, you're well over 15 minutes, so I give you an extra five. But if you have anything, final thoughts or comments, please.
I'm just, again, trying to get the message out and really push our small businesses as well as that community pride piece and the history, the rich heritage and history of our, our region. So sorry that I took too long on that. There was much more to talk about, but that does give you an idea of some of our initiatives over the past year and a half, and I believe we have made great strides to improve value for members and also benefit the, the community as a whole. So our ask today, the last slide was that we are hoping the town of Midland will decide to support us with municipal membership because we are entirely dependent on membership revenue right now. Thank you so much for listening.
And please don't leave. We have some question for you. I can assure you, there's a motion coming forward after this with regards to membership, so.
Thank you.
Hang on while you'll hear the vote. I see Counselor Gordon, then I have Counselor Cunningham.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I was going to let you on a little secret that, yeah, the cane comes out and yanks you, and you run out of time. But all we have to do, all we have to do to get around that, and it's a little secret for anyone watching, is get the counselor to ask you a question. If there's anything more you wanted to share with us, you don't have a time limit on answering our questions. So there's, there's compromises and workarounds to all of these things.
Thank you.
I wanted you to get to the last slide because I did have the advantage of, and anyone who looks at our agenda could, could see your slide deck. So thank you for submitting that in advance. I did review it. I didn't have the wonderful narration, but I certainly got the gist, and I don't need a sales pitch to know the value of Chambers of Commerce. I've availed myself of their services over the years when I have my own businesses, both here and in other, other municipalities. So bravo for the work you guys do. And, you know, I acknowledge the struggle. There are a lot of competing interests. There's a lot of people with their hands out. Businesses, you know, tend to take chambers and all these other different services kind of for granted, or they, you know, if they fall into a negative light, it's, it's hard for the new person coming in to, you know, change that opinion, and it sounds like you're working hard to do that. That's wonderful. And I was going to say that if we didn't get to it, your ask at the end that we, you know, buy a membership is, you know, it's, it's almost like a duh. So I'm glad that there is a motion that supports that. It's a tiny price to pay, and it's a, it's a show of solidarity. Of course, we support the Chamber, and, and we would, I'm confident we're going to pass that and continue our membership, our longstanding membership with you. So again, bravo for what you've done. I appreciate, if there's anything you felt like, oh, man, I missed it, and the time is up, please throw it in right now as in response to my question before we move on to Counselor Cunningham.
Oh, thank you so much for your comments and for your support, which is very, very much appreciated. I think the rest of my presentation really just focused on the fact that we need to support these members, especially now. And we are representing a large number. It's a large geographic region, but the primary or the bulk, the largest percentage, of course, are in the town of Midland. And I do feel with the testimonials that we're now receiving from members because we, we're communicating with them constantly to make sure that we're on the right track, and if there's anything else we can be doing, and they're very, very favorable and supportive. So I, I'm excited. I'm energized, and I think there's great things ahead for, for next year, once COVID retreats. And yeah, we're, we're excited. So I look forward to working with everyone, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. Counselor Cunningham.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thanks for coming to do this, Kathy. I really appreciate you bringing that fulsome report. That was, there's so much that you've been doing since you started on with the Chamber. And I wanted to, first of all, point out, the collaboration that you have created is a new and wonderful innovation, and you've, you've showed some great examples of that. When I ran for election, it was a, a big part of it was, we had so many silos that needed to be turned into pillars, and your attitude and willingness to do that have been very impressive. I wanted you to speak a little bit to the fact that both your newsletter and your social media presence are not exclusive to members, especially during COVID, that you have opened up the support that you're giving to be promoting. Before that, it was the whole town, but now also being able to promote those individual people who are not maybe yet able to afford a membership or are not currently members. As you mentioned, 400 members, 1,000 people in the newsletter. So if you could speak a little bit to how you're sharing out that promotion to people in the entire community.
Thank you so much. That's a wonderful question and a great, great comment. So yes, so we have just under 400 members, and our newsletter does go out to about 1,000 people. So we've grown this database over the past year and a half, so town council. So Town Council should be receiving our e-newsletters. And that's applicable for all of the four municipalities. We have a number of partners through the County of Simcoe, different businesses, other relationships that we've built with the media, and they're all receiving our newsletter, which is biweekly. And absolutely, they're not all members, obviously. And especially during COVID, with our social media, we have a number of businesses reach out to us and say, can you promote us? We're not a member of yours, but could you promote this for us? Because we're really suffering now. We did a lot of promotion over the last several months for non-members, just because, you know, how couldn't we, you know, support them over this time period? So this is how we're getting new members. We've actually got four new members this week. So even though it's a pandemic situation, people are noticing us and they see our social media presence, which of course goes out to everybody. And that's applicable too with our workshops and our webinars. This is not just for members, this is to anybody in the community and they're all free. So anything we're doing partnering with the public library, the other Chambers of Commerce, Sandbox Center, these are all free webinars to anybody in the community, not just our membership. Thank you for that question.
Mayor Strether.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. It's pretty clear from the presentation that this is dynamic organization, that it's to Counselor Cunningham's point, an inclusive organization. I get twice a week at least emails in me about all these interesting things. I can't possibly get to them all, but clearly they're well supported within the community. It hasn't always been that way. And to Counselor Gordon's point about it being a no-brainer, it is now absolutely a no-brainer and it's very much thanks to the efforts of Ms. Tate.
Thank you.
I would, I believe that wholeheartedly. And that's why that motion is now, will be before council very shortly in terms of supporting the chamber, because it is a, it's like a phoenix from the fire. It's just amazing, the transformation. And I'd just like to say thank you to Ms. Tate for the energy and clearly the devotion to the organization and to merchants in the area. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Strether, and I really do appreciate the support and the fact that you've noticed some changes. And we, we won't disappoint. We're going to continue in the same vein.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from council? Ms. Tate, if I could, I had a quick question for you. And I wanted to thank, thank you very much this evening for your presentation and also wanted to congratulate all the nominees with regards to the Rockstar Award and especially Julie P. from Mink for winning. Congratulations to her. But one, I'm in the sales business and I have the opportunity to travel to many communities. And the communities that I see that have the most vibrant, vibrant local businesses seem to work very, very well with the Chamber of Commerce and the BIA. Is there a plan or anything moving forward? I know it's COVID and I, I just, I just wondered, like, I look at Huntsville, Collingwood, et cetera, et cetera. Collingwood, BIA and the, and the chamber were hand in hand. Is it the idea that we have a too big a chamber that we're representing three or four different communities, sorry, four different communities that hinders us? Would it be better off having a Midland Chamber of Commerce to work hand in hand? Or I'm just curious how the others are, if there was a plan. With that said, I'm 100% supporting the membership. I appreciate all the hard work that's gone on like last year and a half and look forward to many more.
Thank you so much. It's a great question. And I mean, we're absolutely open to working with the BIA. We've, I've been to several of their AGMs and different meetings. And I'm definitely in tune with what they're doing, receiving their communication all the time. So we're, we're open to that partnership if, if something comes up. And it's definitely on our radar, but you're right, it hasn't been done to this point, but there's no reason why it couldn't. I'm not sure if that answers your question or not, but.
Oh, it does, for sure. I appreciate. Now, is it, are we better off to have a single BIA, or sorry, Chamber of Commerce for the Town of Midland? Or you feel it works quite well for Southern Georgian Bay? Because at one time it was the Midland Chamber of Commerce.
Right. And I'm just learning more and more the history behind that. There used to be a Penetang machine chamber and, and then a Midland, and then there was some amalgamation. And, you know, lots of things happened five years ago with EDCNS in the heart of Georgian Bay when they came in. So to this point, I think it's working well. I think that we're able to represent, I mean, the bulk of the members, to be honest with you, are in Midland anyway. Certainly, you know, the second in line would be Penetang machine and then Tay and Tiny would be much less numbers. So I think it's working well so far. There's no talk about separating them. I think we're able to service, service the businesses. They all have the same concerns, especially now during COVID. So and with email communication and webinars online and that type of thing, reaching larger numbers seems to be not an issue for us.
Well, that's fantastic. I'm glad to hear amalgamation works. Thank you very, very much. And I want to thank you and greatly appreciate all your hard work. It really is tough, especially, I can't imagine what you're going through with this COVID and hopefully it's down the road in no time.
Thank you so much.
Now, if you'd like to stick around, we have a nice motion I'll read and we'll wait for the vote. Moved by Counselor Maine, second by Counselor McGinn. That further to the PowerPoint presentation provided by Ms. Kathy Tate, General Manager, Southern Georgian Bay Chamber of Commerce, highlighting the initiatives undertaken by the Southern Georgian Bay Chamber of Commerce over the past one and a half years. Counselor herein supports reinstatement of the Town's Southern Georgian Bay Chamber of Commerce membership for the remainder of the council term, which would be the next two years. Any questions or comments with regards to this motion? Counselor Gordon.
Thanks. Needless to say, I wholeheartedly support this and I echo a lot of the mayor's words about the turnaround that people have clearly seen with the chamber. Not trying to throw the old chamber, you know, organization part under the bus, but, you know, credit where it's due with the turnaround. I, just speaking about the potential of, you know, imploding the collaboration and having a Midland-only chamber, I think with all the, all the efforts we're making to work collaboratively with our neighboring municipalities, that it just, it would seem very backwards to even consider, you know, making a Midland-centric chamber when everything else we do is collaborative and all about North Simcoe. So, and I know that Deputy Mayor wasn't suggesting that. I'm sure he's just echoing some of the concerns that some people share. But I'm confident that you guys can work in lockstep with multiple BIAs and continue your mandate and, you know, working together collaboratively as a team without, you know, dropping the A-word that makes everyone so nervous. I think we can behave as if we have amalgamated to a large degree and share, continue sharing services and sharing wonderful resources like the chamber and BIAs and make us all better and stronger without having to reinvent the wheel and run our own little silos. So bravo, and of course, I'll happily be saying.
Well said, and I agree with you wholeheartedly. We're much better together than we are apart. So I greatly appreciate the Southern Georgian Bay Chamber of Commerce and the work that they're doing for the whole Southern Georgian Bay. So well said, Counselor Gordon. Any other questions or comments? I see none. Those all in favor? All right, welcome. We're now new members of the Southern Georgian Bay Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having us.
I'm going to announce that tomorrow on social media.
I expect to see that on the Facebook and tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much and appreciate your time coming this evening.
Thank you. I'm going to log off. Have a wonderful evening and I'll see everyone.
And we look forward to seeing you again in six months' time for an update.
Okay, thank you so much. Bye-bye, everyone.
All right, take care. Bye-bye. Next up on the agenda, we have a public hearing, which we have none. We had no items withdrawn from the agenda, so I would turn it over to our CIO, Mr. Denault, for COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and members of council. Hope you can hear me okay. Good, thank you. Again, I'd like to, I'd like to start the COVID update in terms of what's going on in North Simcoe and in Midland by announcing Tina LaCoco is on the call today. I think I announced last time we were together that we were successful in getting our Executive Director of Corporate Services and Town Solicitor secured. So Tina is on the call tonight and I'll just give her a chance to introduce herself and turn on her video if she can. Can't hear you, can't hear you, Tina.
You're muted.
Hi. Thank you, David. Hello to Mayor and members of council. It's nice to see you all somewhat in person. I'm very much looking forward to embarking on a new journey with Town of Midland. I'm spending my initial time getting to know everyone and learning about the processes and procedures and how we do things here. And I'm looking forward to contributing in any way that I can to move us forward. And thank you for the opportunity.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much, Tina. And I know, I know you'll all enjoy meeting her and even members of the community when she, she gets out and about and gets involved with the many things that she will be taking care of. I think you'll find her a tremendous resource for this town. So we're very lucky to have her join our senior leadership team and certainly makes us stronger with her experience and energy. So great to have Tina on board. November 4th, if you look at the numbers over the last month for North Simcoe in terms of the incident of COVID, it has not been a very good month. About a month ago, across North Simcoe, we were sitting at about 38 cases. As of today, there are 66 cases. So over that one month period, we saw a 73% increase in the number of cases across North Simcoe. Obviously, that was probably attributed to a lot of activity over the Thanksgiving break. So those social interactions that may have occurred, you know, could have resulted in that. So again, it's just a reminder that everyone needs to be very cautious about, about what's happening out there and continue to make sure we're doing the right things in terms of socially distancing, using masks and of course washing your hands and keeping your social circle small. The one area that certainly the Chief Medical Officer in, in Simcoe Muskoka is paying particular attention to his long-term healthcare. And he in fact issued an order yesterday to the administrators of the long-term healthcare facilities, giving those special instructions on visitation in those facilities to make sure that we're being extra cautious in those. We saw unfortunately some of the impacts in Simcoe Manor in one of the long-term care facilities in our region and resulted in a number of deaths and people getting COVID. So again, this thing spreads like wildfire if you give it a chance. So, you know, it's just a really good reminder that we all must continue to do what we're doing, you know, very well in Midland, to be honest. You know, we're quite fortunate, but again, again, let's, let's continue to be cautious in what we're doing. A new framework was also announced by the province. I think many people saw that. So we're going to be adjusting to what all that means. I think we're all accustomed to the stage 1, 2, 3. Now we'll get adjusted to some colors and five different areas, but it's designed to be flexible and responsive, responsive to the changes in the environment. So I think we're all going to start to learn the new lexicon with that and how we can adjust to that. We're at, if you like, the lowest stage right now, the prevent stage or the green stage, if you like, which encourages the proper use of protocols. But again, we're, we're paying particular attention to where the numbers are going. Everyone's, of course, being mindful of some of the holidays coming up. So I think you'll see a lot of messaging around that on how to do those things safely. As municipalities, we're looking very closely at activities that people do in the winter months and how to accommodate those and do those safely. So we're sharing best practices on those things. So again, that, that collaboration that we just talked about during the deputation is really the strength of not just North Simcoe, but the entire county to share that kind of information, to do it quickly. There's an awful lot of adaptation that has to occur every week with different requirements that come out. One of the topical things that has been discussed this week has been the use of masks and the type of masks that you use. So I think we'll start to see some clarity around that. All of that is because there's more information that becomes available as they learn more about the virus. They're adapting to what works to manage it. So all of this, although some might find it confusing, I think is necessary and we just need to adapt. Because I think we'll be living like this for some time. Hopefully it will get better, but we need to adapt. And that's certainly what we think. So that's the extent of the update I wanted to provide. Again, the town and the administration in the town, we continue to be focused on what we can do to serve our residents. We're paying very close attention to all forms of funding that may be available to help us with that. That in itself takes a great deal of time to go through, to understand how to apply and what you can apply for. But we're going to try and take every advantage of that to make sure that we can offer the safest environment possible for everyone and, and do it as quickly as possible. So thank you for everyone's patience, not only on council, but to our residents. And I look forward to any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much, Mr. Denault. And welcome, Ms. Tina Loco, LoCoCo. Am I saying that right? I apologize.
That was good. It's LaCoco, yes.
I apologize. But welcome aboard to Team Midland. Thank you very much. I have Counselor Gordon and then Counselor Maine. Counselor Gordon?
Thank you very much for your update as usual. This one might be more an Andy one. I don't, it's not really, well, it is kind of COVID-related, but a lot of people have been asking, and I know I've had some emails with you, when the, you know, King Street, the parts that are done, obviously, are, can be opened up for the public. I know the plan was to have it open entirely for the, for winter, for plowing and whatnot. But a lot of people are seeing the sections that look, you know, largely complete, if not totally complete, other than the beautification for the spring and wondering, are we going to open things up in stages? Or is it going to be Big Bang? And when's the party? So those are the, I know I had these dialogues by email, but I, you know, no one else hears them. So here we are having a quick chat at council, so perhaps Mr. Campbell can enlighten everyone because they're all getting excited for King Street.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Counselor Gordon, and to all of council and everyone watching. Yeah, we're getting really excited that this project is done. We're done the underground work, all the pipes, water main, sewer, stormwater are done now. The asphalt, I didn't get out there today, but hopefully by Friday, the asphalt will be down with this warm weather.
It looked down this afternoon, just so you know. I swear it was, it was done.
Okay, well, the guys are doing great. So that means, you know, for, for this winter, you know, the street will be open. Really, over the next couple of weeks, they want to try and get the, the rest of the paving stone done. And, you know, we're basically thought we'd have some snow by now. So we're, we're lucky now that we'll maybe have, it looks like in the weather forecast, another two weeks of nice work. So I would say, you know, clearly the end of November, the contractor is going to be wrapping what they will be doing for this year. We weren't planning on a grand opening per se. We, you know, have that next spring with, once the plants are planted, the trees are planted. You know, right now, we're just glad as anything that the snow didn't fly the end of October, the way it did last year, because we were barely able to pave a couple of projects the first week of November last year. So the weather's being very friendly and helpful to us. So to everyone, you know, the contractor, you know, they'll be getting the fences down in the next two weeks. Now the asphalt's done. Yes, they still have some sidewalks to do, but for, by the end of November, the street will be, be walkable. And if they, if the snow does start flying, we'll be having some temporary asphalt sidewalks put down for the winter. But.
Now, Mr. Campbell, is there opportunity to open up the bottom end? It seems like there hasn't been much work done there for the last couple of weeks and, or from Dominion to Bay Shore, or are we waiting to open it all at the same time?
Well, it's, it's really, we can have some discussions with the contractor. You know, they, they have their limits of construction. They have to protect and work around safety. Like, we can talk with them tomorrow to see, see what their plans are. Mitch Sobel, the project manager, is the one working with them on a day-to-day basis. So tomorrow I can talk with Mitch.
Yeah, I did. The only reason why I ask, I think it would be nice because they were a little affected last fall with regards to starting in September last year. And now we're sort of almost getting a double, if we could open up that bottom end and get at least some people shopping downtown. That would be fantastic. So thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. Did you have a follow-up, Counselor Gordon?
Nope, that was it. Great on. Thanks a lot. Things are going well.
Thank you, Counselor Maine.
Yes, well, I guess if we're talking about downtown, the downtown businesses are, are open.
Just talking about COVID, but absolutely, yeah, they're available all different ways, pickup, delivery. They'd love to see if you get opportunity. I had a COVID question for Mr. Dino. It was actually more of a comment. I think one thing that was really striking was Dr. Charles Gartner was talking about how the infection rate is one point two. That means that every person gives it to one point two people. And if we keep going at that rate, it is going to continue to grow exponentially. We've got to get it under one, you know, point nine or whatever, to be able to contain it. And so there's worrisome news in, you know, city of Ottawa, they're saying, oh, we're going to learn to live with it. And I think that's worrisome. So the question, I guess, would be with the new framework and the new rules, I know there's a lot of hesitation towards going to a second lockdown. You see some of the European countries are already going into their second lockdown. I'm guessing this new framework is going to allow for more targeted. If you want to use the analogy, putting the fire out if it pops up in some places. How is that going to affect all of Simcoe County if there's pockets of Simcoe County where clearly there is a outbreak, which is uncontrollable community transmission? That's some of the issues that we're seeing with the regional zones is some regions are going into lockdowns, others aren't, and people are kind of moving back in between them. That doesn't necessarily always work. So I guess it's it's just waiting game. We're just going to continue to wait and take the advice of the the province and the health unit. Thank you.
Thank you for you, through you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for the question, Counselor Maine. And it is a question that that we did pose to the to the chief medical officer. So we meet with the chief medical officer every week. I'll be meeting with him tomorrow again, where the C O's get to get some insight into how things are going and also to offer any feedback that that we're hearing from you about the community or issues that we have with program. So we did bring that up last week when we felt Simcoe is a very large community county, as we know, with the southern tier, very populous, where you're seeing, you know, some some tremendous transmission rates down there. So our question was, is would there be the potential to potentially perhaps treat different parts of Simcoe differently? You know, if there were restrictions in in place. And his answer was honest in that we'll see, you know, his answer was basically, we'll see. You know, it is something that's that's being considered, you know, hopefully, none of us will get into situation where we'll have to face those restrictions. But I think what we're seeing from the government is they're trying to balance, you know, that that very, very difficult decision of supporting businesses and individuals while certainly keeping people safe. You know, and I think certainly from my perspective, they're they're taking every input when they consider that. So we did offer that perspective that, you know, if if there is some flexibility, we'd like to certainly discuss that and be considered. But ultimately, it'll be the decision of the chief medical officer. And then finally, the province will actually decide. Hope that hope that helps.
Absolutely. And just a quick follow up. I think what I think we all need to realize is the curves and the numbers of confirmed data is going to look different going into this wave with a lot more testing than what it did in the first wave, because they were saying, you know, it was almost six to twelve times the amount of people got it than actually were tested. So I think that's the thing is we see the numbers and they seem like they're spiraling out of control compared to the first wave. But we're, it's not an apples to apples because there's so many unknowns. There's so many untested, you know, confirmed, not confirmed cases. So that's just the only thing is we're trying to track the numbers and you see where it's going. It always say everyone is very worried, very concerned. And I guess that's just a reminder that we just continue to need to stay vigilant, wear masks, wash hands, meet outdoors, that type of thing. So thank you for all the work touching base with the health unit and the health unit's been fantastic. Their communications have been very great. And you've seen over the last few months, their dashboards have been become very fulsome. It's very helpful for people trying to track this day to day. So thank you.
And thank you. Again, Council FMA through you, Deputy Mayor, to to Counselor Maine and the rest of the councilors. The one thing I will add as well is we did ask the the medical officer about the status of the flu vaccine. Because we know how a number of people are trying to get their flu vaccines and there is, there has been issues with doing that. We've been assured that the vaccines are available. It's just there's a tremendous amount of people trying to get it. So please be patient with the process. It's much like the US voting system, allow the votes to come in, allow the vaccines to come in. They will be there. Just keep trying because it's a good sign, actually, that that so many people are trying to get it and eliminate that from, you know, being potentially diagnosed as COVID, which which helps the the healthcare system.
Thank you, Counselor Gordon.
Thanks. Yeah. And to that point about the flu vaccine, you can go to the superstore and get poked there, you know, while you're getting your groceries. So anyway, I did, I forgot there was one COVID update. I know I talked about this a couple of weeks ago and just wondering, I haven't followed up by email, so I'll do it now. Where are we with getting the seniors into the rec center so they can walk around that un- un-iced ice pad or in the hallways or anything? So to get them out of Walmart, not that I have anything against Walmart, but no.
Thank you through you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, that's, we've, if we haven't, I haven't heard of an update yet from Ask Anony, we're reaching out to Ask Anony to see how they felt about offering this type of program through the seniors. So I think we were waiting for for some information from them. Sean from our rec team was doing that. So I'll follow up on that. The other aspect which which we wanted to 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 make sure we had good clarity on was the status of the YMCA. So I know council gave us direction to work with YMCA who offers programs for individuals that would include, you know, access to to a walking track there. So we've been working, when I say we, I'm talking about the North Simcoe, you know, community, the C O community. So we sat down with the YMCA to see to see what their needs are. We we met with them this week, I think it was yesterday or the day before. We bounced off some ideas which we think will hopefully meet their needs. They're going to come back to us next week. They have a plan. You know that they would like to announce the community. I don't want to, you know, certainly steal their thunder. But I'm hoping to come back to council soon with a report on on any assistance we could potentially offer them so they can offer their services.
Fantastic. So like ask onward and upward.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for Mr. CEO for with regards to COVID update? I see none. Thank you, everyone. On to notice a motion. Any member, Mayor Strathern?
I thank you Deputy Mayor. Deputy Mayor, I'd just like to put on the table that a motion that council here and supports the council's task force on affordable housing committee and homelessness action committee committees to work with staff to establish an initial allocation of a hundred thousand within the twenty twenty one budget for consideration for the purpose of establishing housing and transitional housing policy and initiatives within a range of affordability and within a range of neighborhoods. And to plan said housing that provides options for people at all stages of life. Reason I'm like to put this on the table is to make sure that it gets into the formal budget process. I haven't had a chance to, the committee hasn't really struck in this first meeting for the homelessness committee, but I just wanted to make sure that staff is aware that we make an allocation in there. And then subsequently, we'll have discussions, full some discussions around what may or may not need to be in the budget, but that just provides for a placeholder. So that will come up for discussion at the next meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you, Counselor Gordon. You had a notice?
No, I just was going to say this is one of those times where if you want, we can poll the people here and we can deal with it right now. It's not like we got a ton of stuff on the agenda tonight.
I think in order to follow process, we need to have them notice go forward for the public, for the opportunity. But if I I understand your process, I don't think another two weeks is going to hurt. And I for one would like to follow a process. That's how we're having set up. But point taken. Thank you. Anybody else have anything to add? Any other notice of motion? I see none. Now, did did you want to bring a motion forward, Counselor Gordon, to deal with that today? Or I'm not sure if we can, but I don't want to cut you off by any means if we want to go ahead.
No, it was more just, you know, a show of nods if, you know, like there is a process, we can all approve and, you know, we can make this happen tonight. But if you would rather, I I understand the the concept. We let this percolate, the public can ruminate on it and maybe reach out to us over the course of the next two weeks and provide input. So
That's how I like to do it. But if we want to move forward, if it's a will of council, then it's a will of council.
I really defer to the mayor. Do you, are you ready to pitch this tonight if we were to do that? Or would you rather we wait? It's in your hands.
I I think we should probably have a conversation prior to actually running it through. I mean, the staff's not as aware of it. They helped to craft this, actually. It's just to make sure there's placeholder, but
No problem.
Representation from, we should get together and talk about what we might be looking at for twenty twenty one. So and then perfect to it follow through in a conversation as as the deputy mayor says, also gives people a chance to ruminate on it for two weeks. There's not, I don't think there's a hurry. We've we've already pushed the budget process out to January. But just to make sure that we're all aware and staff's aware that we want this placeholder. So
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor Strathern. Any other notice of motion? I see none. We'll move on to announcements. Any announcements this evening, Counselor Gordon?
I just had one that I have two, basically. One is the form of a question and the mayor just said it. We did vacate those dates for the budget in December. But there wasn't really any explanation given as to why we're moving into January. I like my default go to is I suspect it's COVID, but I wouldn't mind hearing why we're, you know, not doing it in December because we made really great strides last year at getting it done for January. So that's more of a question. I don't know if there's anybody that can answer that. And then I have just a run of the mill announcement.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And yes, to to members of council, it was, it was a decision that, you know, we brought the senior leadership team together and we heard from our finance team about the schedule. We checked on the status of where we were on the budget and and I'll tell you that the budget process that that is being led by our CFO, I think it's a tremendous process that that he's introduced with the team. I think it's it's a very thorough process. It is a new process, though. A new process for all the staff involved here. So the the degree that they're getting involved in, I guess, the degree of of information they're being asked to provide is somewhat new to some of that staff, that staff. So we on two counts, you know, was the decision by by the senior leadership team to push the to push the schedule up to January. And the reasons for for the two reasons were, one, we just felt we were pushing our staff too hard. The same staff that's running the budget process is trying to get a pretty, some pretty onerous requirements together for some of the COVID related funding that we're trying to seek. And those are on some pretty tight timelines. There's also a number of service reviews that we're all participating in that have kind of a burn date by the end of this year. So we have to get these things done by the end of the year. We also have year end that's happening. So all those things are kind of compounding and landing on the same people. But the one that that really troubled us the most was we just, we just acknowledged that our people are really burning, burning the stick at both ends. And we wanted to give them some flexibility because we have that flexibility. We still think we'll be able to obviously achieve this budget well within the time that that is needed. We just want to make sure we get it right. So that was, that was really the reasoning behind it.
Thank you, Mr. Dino. That, yeah, makes perfect sense. And given, you know, the turnover of our staff and all the things that have been going on, I'm content, you know, I don't take issue with this. I just really wanted to know why. That's all.
You had another, another item, Counselor?
I do. This one involves some visual effects. So just a second here. Uh oh, there we go. We got the digital stash going here. I just started growing mine out for Movember yesterday, and I have a bit of a baby face. And if I grow it out, it's going to look really creepy. I'm committing to doing it. But you couldn't tell on camera tonight that I've got like a days of stubble. So I did, this is more of a PSA for Movember. In here, I there's because it's digital, I can do all kinds of crazy ones. Look at this one. Look at that. Movember, just for those of you aren't familiar, it's a an event annually that involves growing mustaches, if you're able to during the month of November to raise awareness of men's health issues like prostate cancer and testicular cancer and men's suicide amongst many things. So for those of you who want to participate, you don't necessarily have to be a dude. If you can grow a stash and you're not a dude, right? Right on. Or you can use the digital one. You can see Council Oshewski is well ahead on this. He's got a, he's just got like a real dangerous looking one going on. Best I can do tonight is the Zoom overlay version. Here's one with a little beard action.
Good luck forward to see in two weeks.
But yeah, a couple of weeks, it'll look even nastier and I won't use the digital and you'll just see why, you know, I don't wear a mustache. So anyway, that's a shout out for Movember and please participate.
Excellent. Counselor Cunningham?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I have a few little announcements that I'd like to share. So first of all, our seniors council is continuing on. They've received their survey results from the age friendly community survey, and they have a workshop coming up on the tenth. If you are not following them already on Facebook, Midland Seniors Council, please do so. There's a lot that will be happening coming out of that survey and some decisions still to be made about priorities. Have a look at that. Please register and follow that page. Culture Alliance has a bunch of interesting things going on and very little to share from an event standpoint other than the Creative Community Culture Conference is live now. I believe you can still get your tickets, which were twenty five dollars for the eight sessions, which let you have access to all the recordings after the fact. So if you know someone in the creative community who is maybe struggling, looking to rebuild their business and figure out, how do you do performance art in a socially distanced world? Get them to check out culturealliance.ca. Other things from an entertainment standpoint, check out our Midland Cultural Center for the Day in the Life series, which has gone virtual and you can go and view those through that website and just watch when you want on demand, which is a nice idea. Last piece is shop local. It is November. We did have snow. I know it's beautiful and warm right now, but pretend it's snowing and go shop downtown, go into our local stores and start doing your Christmas shopping while it's gorgeous outside. We have some amazing weather right now, but first just pretend it's snowing. Christmas really is coming. The holidays are coming. So whatever excuse you can come up with to buy presents for December, please do so. We're also collecting information if you or a shop you know is doing shop local online. Please let the E D C N S know so you can go to the I love my local.ca website, which is an E D C N S website, Economic Development Corporation website, and submit that there so that we can help to encourage in a promo shop local, shop online, don't go to the Amazon, stay here. That's it.
Well said. Well said. I have council again, then Mayor Strathern. And Counselor Maine.
I'd like to take this time to make a short announcement. It's more of a request. While it's warm and while you're actively transporting yourself to downtown and you're passing by your vehicle to do so, take a look at your tires and put your winter tires on now while it's nice and warm and before you have an accident and before you need them. That's it. Thank you.
Well said. Mayor Strathern?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The Legion, Canadian Legion, Rough Canadian Legion started their poppy campaign this week. Because of COVID, they're not able to 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 fundraise. So this is a big way they're going to fundraise this year. So please make sure you get your poppy. And there the boxes are merchants sold throughout to the community. This is a wonderful way. They do great work in the community and this will help a long way to help them to continue that work. If you're wondering, in case you're wondering, you wear it over your your left side of your your clothing over your heart. And you're not really supposed to wear them after after the eleventh, but please, please support the Legion by buying a poppy. So they're in their efforts through in in the in the community. And I would also just like to remind people that there will be a very limited service at the seventh set of tap on the eleven because of COVID. I don't think there will be a dinner at the Legion. Rogers will be broadcasting it though. So for those of you who wish to wish to participate. And of course, remember, it's just something that it's not just November the eleventh, but year round. So please take a moment on the eleventh to think about those who have served our country and made significant sacrifices, both in the past and currently in our current armed forces. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mayor Strathern. Unless we forget, this is a very important time of year for our veterans and anybody has served for our freedom. So I would encourage everybody to please, if they can, to support our our local veterans and wear a poppy. Next up, I had Counselor Maine.
Well, thank you, Deputy Mayor Ross. Apologies again for everyone for being late. When you're in, it goes out and you have a Zoom meeting. It's a, you're, can't work. Just want to do a couple of shows. Big ups to Brendan Maine. He won the first annual twenty four hour screen writing contest. Hosted by Theater by the Bay, and he actually did a little work on the town of Midland. The devil comes down to Midland, which is at the crossroads of Highway 12 and 93. So it was a fun little one act play that they put together. Uh, it's on Theater by the Bay's uh YouTube. Uh, they did a live script reading. Uh, so it's great to see some more award winning work from our award winning culture Midland uh screen, right? Uh playwright. Um, the County Road 93, getting a lot of great uh feedback on that. It's coming together. It'll be hopefully wrapping up in the next couple of weeks. A lot of people are already saying that how you can actually, uh it's accessible that you can go to the mall now as a pedestrian or on a wheelchair. So it's a great improvement to our community. Uh, lots of great hires. Obviously, Tina LaCoco is joining us. There's a whole bunch of emails from Laura Yorcan about some new hires. So welcome to the team. Um, thank you to Angela Zhao, who will be leaving us at the end of the week. She was a fantastic planner, did some amazing reports for us, uh and we look forward to. Uh, all the great things that she's gonna do.
Here.
Uh, speaking of people leaving us, I wanted to uh pass condolences for uh passing of Ken Viancor. Uh, I know him because he's family. He's my wife's uncle, but many people in town know knew Ken from his many years at Community Living Heronia. And also uh in many years working with Ontario Special Olympics. He was a super coach. He was a super volunteer. Uh, so it was a very sad passing uh with cancer last week. And so uh Ken, uh all the athletes with uh on the team that got to go to nationals for the uh ball hockey. Just wanted to give a special thanks to Ken for being the best coach ever. So thanks to Ken and all the amazing volunteers that we have. Town of Midland would not be the same without all these amazing volunteers that have dedicated years of their lives to making the town better, and Ken was definitely a super volunteer. So thank you, Ken, for everything.
Yeah.
Well said, Counselor Maine. Thank you very much for bringing that up. Any other announcements? If I could, I just uh wanted to wish everybody all the best for Remembrance Day, and it's hard to believe this COVID uh continues on. And uh with the Christmas coming and the holiday season, I would some. Please ask everybody to please support our local food bank. Um, in these times of need, uh, I know we had a great hit at the very start of COVID, and uh we've all settled into our lives, uh our new way of life, but. If we can, and we have the means, please support that local food bank. Thank you. Um, that would be all for today. I have a motion to get us out of uh. Committee hold moved by Counselor Cunningham, second by Counselor Maine, that the committee hold rise and report. All those in favor? Your worship is all yours. Thank you very much, everyone.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um. I have a motion moved by Counselor Gordon, second by Counselor Wasevsky, that the recommendations of the committee of the whole for the meeting of November 4th. 2020 be adopted as resolutions of council. All those in favor? Thank you. That carries. Next, uh move by Counselor. Um, Counselor Gordon, second by Counselor Maine. That the following bylaws, by law 2020 dash 59, establish a policy for the recruitment of employees for the town of Midland. And by law 2020 dash 62, amend the bylaw 2015 dash 72, being a bylaw to authorize the terms and conditions of employment policy manual. For management non-union employees from January 1, 2020 to December 31, 2020, be passed and enacted. Council, you've heard the motion. All in favor? Thank you. That carries and. We then move to the second to last motion, which is moved by Deputy Mayor Ross, seconded by Counselor McGinn. The bylaw 2020 dash 63, being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of the regular council meeting, a closed session held November 4th, 2020, be passed and enacted. Council, you've heard the call of the uh resolution, the motion, uh all in favor? Thank you again. That carries and the. Motion of the evening. Moved by Counselor McGinn. Seconded by Counselor Cunningham at this regular meeting of council, a closed session adjourned at 8:18 P M. Now, that may be a new land speed record. I'm not sure. All in favor? I see all in favor. A wonderful weekend. I understand it's gonna be absolutely beautiful. Uh, if you get a chance to come out to the Senate half uh over the course of the next week or so, just to. Uh, remember those who uh who fell in the various conflicts, uh please, please do so. Thanks for everything, council, and have a great week.